Be nice and quiet at this.
Yeah. Welcome, everybody, to the July 17, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located in the back of the chambers for your convenience. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and I will do a moment of silence and pledge, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda item is the review and approval of the agenda. Is there any changes?
So moved.
Moved by Hadcock.
Seconded.
Seconded by Buschard. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll recognize Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 3, 2018; Approval of the minutes of the four-year 2019 budget hearings; Number seven is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on Tuesday, August 7, 2018 for a general fund budget supplement SB 18-007 for a general fund law enforcement budget; Number eight is to schedule a hearing at 9:15 a.m., also on Tuesday, August 7, for general fund budget supplement SB 18-008 for the general fund law enforcement budget; Number nine is the approval of the third quarter 2018 SLA, which is a state and local agreement with the state of South Dakota, submitted by emergency management; Number 10 is to declare the fuel tank system in the Wal Division as surplus for the purpose of disposal, as submitted by the Highway Department; And finally, number 11 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of June 2018, as submitted by Human Resources.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any member from the public who'd like anything from the consent agenda removed for separate consideration? Any from the Board? See none? Look for a motion to approve.
See my motion?
Moved by Hadcock. Seconded by Buschard. Any discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we come to our regular agenda items. Item 12 is a lien request, KNL.
Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to respectfully request that you continue this item until the August 7 meeting at the request of the applicant.
Motion to continue to August 7?
Motion has been made to continue to August 7, made by Hadcock, seconded by Buschard. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we come to item 13, the Wal Economic Development Corporation County Discretionary Tax Formula, by Ms. Cheyenne McGriff, Executive Director. Thanks, Cheyenne.
Thank you. Good morning, Pennington County Board of Commissioners. I appreciate your time today. Excuse the little frog in my throat this morning. As you said, my name is Cheyenne McGriff, Executive Director of the Wal Economic Development Corporation, and I had the opportunity to speak with the Board on November 21, 2017, to discuss the potential creation of a countywide discretionary tax formula. In following that discussion, there were more questions, more information needed, so my goal today is just to provide that additional information. We have been working hard to research and discuss the discretionary tax formula and other options, and primarily with Commissioner DeSanto. Following, or, excuse me, as a review, a discretionary formula is a tax incentive for new construction that can be implemented by municipalities or the county. SDCL 10635.2 outlines the discretionary formula, as well as the types of development that are allowed under the formula, including industrial structures, commercial and non-residential agricultural real property, and new commercial residential structures. Pennington County does have one discretionary formula, adopted October 2007, which applies to real property that is zone residential, platted, and improved with the necessary infrastructure to allow for future residential construction. In the packet I had emailed, I did include a chart, and this is based on information from the South Dakota Department of Revenue on all of the different counties that currently use the discretionary formula, and in what ways and for what time limits. And I just wanted to share that as a comparison to see what the rest of the state has been doing. And based on previous discussion, we found a couple of other items of information we thought were missing, and we spoke with the Director of Equalization. In 2016, there was 67 million in new commercial taxable growth in the county, including all commercial growth, and this equates to roughly 1.3 million in taxes. And the county's portion of these taxes, based on the 2016 levy, would have been $321,868. And one question from last time was, what if we would have implemented this formula? What would we have gained in taxes opposed as a, for the 20% that would have been assessed value? And out of that 321,868, the county would have maintained 20% of that total, which is $64,373. And I did speak with the Pennington County Auditor concerning the discretionary tax formula's impact on the school district levy, because that was another question that was discussed. And I was informed, if the discretionary formula follows the state statute's golden rule, there is no re-levy on the school district to make up the lost revenue. And to further clarify, we discussed this with the South Dakota Department of Revenue, and they told us that according to SDCL 131320.4, there is no need to levy additional tax dollars in the school if the formula is based on a 20, 40, 60, 80, 100% value. So this would be that golden rule that would not affect the school levy. We also discussed the potential of why has the city of Wal not created its own incentive? And the discussion there has been, we just want to see which way the county wants to go before doing that, because this, if the city has a formula, the city formula will override the county. So if the county is interested in doing it, we don't want to do it first and then it not match up. So we're just waiting to move on with that step. Excuse me. The discretionary formula is common and widely used across the state, as you can see in this chart. However, it's not the only way to encourage county growth. We have talked about an alternative option, which could be potentially the creation of a county incentive fund. And we imagine this to be similar to Rapid City's Opportunity Capture Fund. Economic development corporations could apply to this fund for a specific project as opposed to discretionary formula, which is more of a blanket formula. A committee would be established to oversee the fund, including Commissioners, Economic Development Board members, and mayors. If such a fund were to be established, language could be included to require the specific fund not be used for any other purpose by future Commissioners. We estimated the approximate high watermark to be about 321,000, based on that 2016 taxable value number. However, we would suggest to maybe consider an initial refunding of 250,000 per year. The difference with this option, however, is that it would be separately funded as opposed to discretionary formula. My goal today was to provide you with this information based on feedback from my first presentation and the research we have done. Again, I don't have a formal ask, but this is a big decision that may require further discussion and meetings. As, and as stated earlier, we have been working with Commissioner DeSanto on this. However, I would be interested to hear if you, the Commissioners, are open to either one of these options, the discretionary formula or the county incentive fund, or if you have further information that you would like us to seek out. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Was there any comments from the Commissioners?
I have one.
Mr. Buschard.
You did a good job, except for one thing, that the city cannot override the county on their discretionary formula. And we do have a discretionary formula on all of those. It happens to be 100% every, but it is still a discretionary formula. So I don't think the city can do anything right at the moment. It would be up to us to do anything.
Thanks, Ron. Ms. Hadcock.
Thank you. I think it's something we should look into. We do, like with Ag, we give them a $10,000 break on a building, and then we give them a lower rate on their land. I mean, why shouldn't we do something if we can figure out a good formula or something that works for businesses out in the county to encourage? I know one of the guys that I just talked to, he took his manufacturing business in Meade because of some of the things in Pennington County and the surrounding area. So anything, and that's a heck of a business that he took. So anything that we can do maybe to give incentives in a certain way, I don't know if this is the exact way. I need to get with Ms. Cheyenne and get her number, but I would like to look into it because I think it'd be good for the county.
Shannon, did you have any com, I know you had a letter in response. Could you give us a little background on what we have available now?
I'd like to address Deb's comments. Commissioner Hadcock, I'm sorry. The, if the county does a discretionary formula, it applies to all commercial properties or industrial, whatever, countywide, in or out of town. The, the county cannot adopt a discretionary formula for only properties outside of city limits unless the city has a discretionary formula that's different. So if, if the county adopted one, it would apply everywhere.
What do you mean, Shannon, by every, say, we're taking this to the state, you mean, and changing it? Or what are we doing?
No, the, when the county adopts a discretionary formula, it applies to all properties everywhere in the county, whether they be in town or out of town.
Right. Which I'm...
Okay. It, it would not be a discretionary formula for only properties outside of city limits. It would be everywhere.
Right.
And then otherwise, I don't have any other comments. I addressed Cheyenne's idea the last time. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
Sorry. Follow up.
Go ahead, Ms. Hadcock.
So maybe, Shannon, I could meet with you and Cheyenne and kind of look at maybe what we could do for economic development in Pennington County in a way that would, you know, encourage businesses to want to be in our county, and if it's with our city, that's fine, but property taxes are property taxes. So anything you can build up in our area and not have it go somewhere else because they have some other incentive, I'd like to look at that. Like I said, we do save some of our taxpayer money through Ag, but let's, let's look at business, too, so.
Happy to.
Thanks, Cheyenne, for keeping us updated, and now you've got some, some more guidance, and I think with Mark was already, probably has some assistance, too. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
One more thing.
Ms. Hadcock.
Holly's going to give you, give me your phone number, Ms. Cheyenne, and I'll call you this week. Thank you, Ms. Cheyenne, for your presentation.
Next, we come to item 14, the physical year 2019 county provisional budget. And I'll recognize Ms. Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, from the Auditor's Office. I did prepare a little memo for you regarding the changes that were made to the last worksheet that I sent you on the provisional budget, and then just looking for direction on which way the Board wants to go after those corrections are made by motion, please.
Okay, Cindy, from my understanding, we need to make some corrections, and so one would be for mental health and one for readjustment for the public advocate budget. So the adjustments we'd need to move forward to, I'd need a motion to remove the 1.97% tax burden cut from mental health centers budget and set the 2019 budget at 100,948.
Correct.
So I'd need a motion to move forward with that.
Tell me.
Second.
Moved by Buschard, seconded by Hadcock. Any discussion from public? Mission? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Motion number two would be to set the 2019 public advocate budget at 345,000.
Make motion.
Moved by Hadcock. Seconded by Buschard. Any discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The third motion we need, and this has to do with our provisional budget, would be to approve the 2019 provisional budget in the amount of $95,540,99. And further move that the required public hearing be set for September 4, 2018 at 10 a.m.
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Hadcock, seconded by Buschard. Any discussion from public?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Commissioner.
What's the latest number for new FTEs in 2019?
Did that come out to 13, Holly? I can't remember the total on that. In my book?
I don't have, I don't have my book, but I think it was 10, 2, 2...
Twelve and a half, I think, is all I come up with here.
But eight of those are funded. Twelve of them are fully funded by new revenues.
Correct.
So you're saying 12 and a half?
I show 13 and a half.
13.
I missed the one at the State's Attorney's Office, sorry.
Okay. 13 and a half. Mr. Farabee.
Now, and that's 13 and a half, before or after we added the FTEs a month or so ago?
I'm guessing these will be new FTEs in 2019.
On top of the ones that we just added a month or so ago?
For 2018, yes.
Are you talking about the ones from the Sheriff's Office?
We added, a month or so ago, added eight, 10, 12, 13, whatever it was.
That is, that's included.
Included, yeah.
Not on top.
So the 2019's on top of these?
No.
So if we added those a month ago, then why are we adding them as increases to 2019?
I, I don't believe we're adding them as an increase. They came through separately because he wanted to start the hiring process, and then during the budget process, they were reaffirmed in there, but we already had it on our agenda, but that's the total included.
To me, there seems to be some really fuzzy math, so I'll be voting no on the provisional budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farabee. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Mr. Farabee. Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Oh, we got more, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Budget supplements for our SB 18-006 general fund planning and zoning budget.
Yes. Now's the time that we have scheduled the public hearing for the general fund planning and zoning budget in the amount of $104,328 from assigned fund balances. They've been accumulating that in a separate line item for use for their overly comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion to, to approve the supplemental general funding budget in the amount of 104,328 from the assigned fund balance?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Hadcock, seconded by Buschard. Any discussion?
I got one. It's that money is there. We're not putting more money in. We're just moving the money from that account to...
Correct. So they have spending authority for what they've accumulated in reserves, yes.
Right.
Any further discussion? Mr. Farabee.
And that cleans out the bank?
Yes, for that project, it does, yes.
So, in anticipation of further requests for funding of this project?
Not that I am aware of, but you would have to ask PJ.
To me, it's obvious we're going to be asked for more money, and I think the whole thing with the joke to begin with will be voting no.
Okay. Any discussion from the public? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Mr. Farabee. Next, we have the new on-sale, off-sale malt beverage license, Stone Faces Winery.
Yes. We're just asking for a motion to approve the license for Stone Face Winery for their new on, off-sale malt beverage license.
So moved.
And that motion includes, and you hold the license till the property taxes are paid, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion by Hadcock. Now, seconded by LaCroix. Any discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we come to items from the Sheriff. Proposed name and logo from former NAU.
Willie.
And who do we have all coming up?
I'm Willie Walsh, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. I'll let these two distinguish.
You brought the big guns with him.
Yeah.
Alan Solano, CEO, Behavior Management Systems.
Good morning, Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services.
You have the floor, gentlemen.
Well, good morning, and thank you for your time. We're here today. Holly, do I click on this here to, because I have no signal? Oh, there we go. I'm going to pull up the proposed logo and name for the Restoration Center or old NAU campus, or... There we go. And I will pass one of these around, too, so.
You'll put that up there so they can see it?
Yeah, if you could hold that up.
Can you see that, or you need a... Oh, wait, can you see that? Okay.
There we go. Okay, so, again, want to thank you for your time this morning. I know that the Sheriff has, has met with most of you, so we, we will keep this brief this morning, just give you a quick overview, overview of what we're proposing. First, I'd, I'd like to give a thank you to Dawn Claymore with Midwest Marketing. She's here today. Her and her team graciously spent a lot of time on assisting us with, with this project. In fact, as we started this, they put together 24 different logos and names for us to vet through and look at, and they did the same thing with their folks, and so they had a lot of patience with us as we spent quite a bit of time taking this to various entities. I would tell you, somewhere between 250, 300 folks, we showed all the different logos to, to get feedback, and we got it narrowed down to what we're presenting with you today. Obviously, as you guys know, this is a collaboration with BMS, with Allen's folks, also Health and Human Services, with Crisis Care, and all of our partners that are going to be in this building. So, well, the process, like I said, was we vetted this through our folks internally and also externally. So I'll turn it over with...
I would echo the same comments Willie had said, and, you know, Dawn and her crew were very patient with us as we researched and decided what might be the best fit for this, and it really does capture all the program functions within this facility, and, you know, with the goal of meeting people where they're at, and I think, I think this is an outstanding way of representing what this facility is capable of doing.
Well, just nothing really to add. We're excited about the, this moving forward and, and looking at this to come to fruition, and happy to just stand by and answer any questions you might have.
Well, I'll thank, thank you, folks, and I'll have to say, from being on the Building Committee, you, you had a numerous number of, like you said, items to go through and different options, and, and I think you guys did a good job of identifying what the building actually does and the services that are provided. I think the care campus, restoring mind, body, and spirit is, is fitting, and I think you guys did a good job.
Chairman.
Ms. Hadcock.
Sheriff said it had to be nice, but the only issue I have is that care campus, restoring mind, body, and spirit is good, but I still think you're going to get confused with One Heart. Their campus is called One Heart, and you've got a heart with care on your same thing. So you're going to put, are we putting a heart on the building again? What I'm saying is, if I was looking for One Heart, I'd probably go to the care campus first because it has a heart on it. And our, what is their logo looking like? Does that make sense?
What I would tell you is, is, you know, our location of our, of our logo, logo in the care campus will be on the west end of the building, basically the entrance of the administration offices and all that. Our plan is, that's the only place that that's going to be. There won't be, we'll have some directional signage, because obviously, you know, they're where everybody needs to go inside the building. And if, in fact, you know, this obviously is independent of One Heart and whatever plans they have and what they're doing, if, in fact, you know, it happens at one of, at this location that they're looking at, obviously, they're going to be down the street, and we're going to have, I don't know, the next couple of years to educate the folks on where we're at and what we are and what services we provide, and so I think there will be a pretty good gap here, even if that does happen, you know, down the street.
For me, I still think it's going to be confusing. If I, if I was looking for a building and it had a heart on it, I think maybe they'll distinguish it after a while. The other thing, isn't there, one of the programs with the One Heart, isn't it part of, they just announced it on the radio, I forgot what it was called, something where the policemen and, remember the counselors, what were you calling that program? We're going to be in that together, that that's part of, remember, the homeless and the, the transformation where it was, or One Heart where it was, at one time, I thought it was a separate entity from us, and now we're saying that's going to be in the built, same building that, of the care, the care campus.
Yeah, I believe you're talking the Quality of Life Unit?
Yes, sir.
That PD got that grant? Yes, they are going to be in our facility, af, as we went through this and really looked at it. What we believed is, is, you know, with Safe Solutions, you know, they're going to be working with the homeless and these folks, and, which is a big part of what our building will be doing. So they felt it was a, a good fit that they would be in our building so they could directly work with Safe Solutions and all, that will be their, their clients.
Right. So... So I guess that's what I'm saying. You're kind of tying the two together, and then you're also putting a heart on there. I guess if I was in your community, I would start getting confused about your logo and what you're doing in the building. I mean, you've always done that, Barry, and you guys have done a great job. I, I'm not going to say you don't. I'm just saying, for a community, if you're trying to figure out where you're going, they look like the same to me with, with the programs and the heart on the building. So not that transformation, or One Heart is different from the county in one sense, and I know, I know you guys want to tie them together in a sense because they're supposed to be a, something that helps after they're done with the care campus, but I'll still say it, it's going to be confusing to the city folks and the people in the community because you started with transformation and restoration, that was confusing. Now you have a heart on the building with, so, so you're doing exactly the same thing you did before, and then people aren't going to be able to distinguish the difference in one sense, and the other, like I said, I think, I'm not going to, I'm going to be up straight. You're trying to tie them together one way or another so people understand from this, this point, you're going to the next point.
I think a huge piece with this, of course, is the PR and marketing with the announcement of the care campus today, and should the Board approve this. It's kind of like when the concept of the Restoration Center came online, and we did a number of public presentations and visited with many entities. I can tell you personally, I've talked to hundreds of individuals about what will happen across the street, and I think now with the potential change of this going forward as the care campus for the, what was formerly known as the Restoration Center, again, it requires public education on what this building will provide. on what this building will provide and how it will work and how it functions on its own and does its, provides its own, own services.
I think what you guys do is good Barry, always have. I agree with the care campus, restoring mind and body and spirit, but I'm not gonna be probably voting that this, I want the logo because I don't think the heart, I think, is gonna be confusing to the community. Even if you try to separate it, it's still gonna be confusing to the community. So, I think the hand and the Gumby guy is, is very representation, whatever you call that word, but it still has a heart together and you're gonna confuse the community on it.
Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, I would. I agree with Deb because I'm confused. Because it's always been two separate programs and all of a sudden it's the same program and we're combining them and I think this thing has been, I would say misrepresented this whole time.
Anybody else before I speak? Well, folks, I think this is appropriate. You know, I really understand, and I don't even personally remember what the One Hearts logo looks at, looks like at this point in time. I really don't, and I've probably seen it a dozen times just because of the name, but I think the hand and the way it's put is, I, I think it encompasses what, what you provide and what you do. I mean, trying to separate the care center, I think a lot of misconception is, is once these two come out, everybody's trying to tie them up when there was missed, and the wording was, was bad. But the bottom line is, what we're providing, what Pendleton County is doing with some help with some partners, is we're doing the crisis care. We're their emergency stop for what's happening in our community. I mean, bottom line, when, when you make a call because there's something going on with people in our community, we deal with it and this is where they go and what, what happens. The One Heart facility is, is separate from this. Totally separate from this. This is something that Barry and Sheriff Tom have been working on for many, many years, not just something that's just come together in the last two years, it's been thought about before. And so, and to put our program on hold because some other organization is trying to do something to help on the backside of what we're doing with the crisis care, I think is unfair. Because I, I really think the care campus and the logo shows what we're doing for our community, us, the county, not some other entity. And so that's how I'm looking at it. I'm not looking at those other people. I, I can't because we don't know what's gonna happen with that. You know, they're, they're working on things and, and we don't know what the progress is. If, if there's gonna be some confusion, maybe they should change their logo. Why should we? We're here first. We're working on it now. That's, that's the way I look at it. Mr. Solano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a perspective from Behavior Management Systems, you know, we really are looking at this, at this campus as being what each of us are already doing in terms of the Crisis Care Center located over on North Street, Detox, the Safe Solutions, and really bringing what's existing and, and in many ways, a lot of the existing folks that, that come into these services and getting them under one, one roof, so to speak. So, for the Crisis Care Center, we already are working with about 2,000 individuals per year. I don't know what the numbers for Detox and Safe Solutions would be, but these are folks that are already gonna have an identification to these programs, and it's really gonna be about getting them to understand now this is the location where we're able to do all of this together and get people into the best location or the best service right at the start versus them showing up at one location, going through an assessment or evaluation or screening and then deciding, oh, you shouldn't be here, we need you to go over to the Crisis Care Center, and then we end up having to work on the transport. So, so, you know, the, the idea of this being really a care campus, I think is absolutely true. I, I anticipate that could, you know, will there be some confusion? I'm sure at some level there is confusion. We still have confusion between Behavior Management Systems and Black Hills Works where people are simulating that we do the same thing. And we just have to work through that. But this also becomes, I think, a critical element again for law enforcement as they're interacting with folks and they're put in the position right now of having to try and triage and decide where's the best place to have this individual go. So again, this campus concept, I think, is, is real valid for us. Despite whatever will happen with the One Heart, whether that's at this lo, you know, the same area or a different area or how those programs are designed, I think that the advantage we have with the care campus is that these are programs that are already established in existence and really bringing them under that same roof and, and the advantages that that's gonna bring to the community.
Thank you, Alan. Mr. Hagcock?
Number one, I'm not saying anything about your service, guys, because your service does well. The care campus is a good name, just the heart. One Heart did come out before us with the name, and then what we did is we put a heart with, even if their logo's different, I'm gonna say it's still confusing. I'm not saying put this on hold, our building or anything else. What I'm saying is, I'm not gonna agree with the heart on the building when we already have, I like the care campus, restoring mind, body, and spirit. The hand and the Gumby is good, I'll just keep saying, you're, you're gonna confuse again, and I think it's just simpler for our community to, to put care campus, and I don't know if you need the logo then. So, that's what I'm saying. It's not about your services, it's not who came out first, it's not about your transformation in one sense, but people are getting confused with one or the other. If they end up moving by Kmart, if they move by us, it's still what building you go into and who represents what for the county and the city and, and trying to get where you're supposed to go. To me, it's, it's confusing. And we already, we already tried that. I don't know if you guys are in the community on restoration, transformation was going on, but holy crap. You had to, you had to ask thousands of questions of what's the difference, what is this, what is that? And that's not usually a bad thing, but I'm just saying, we're, we're county, we've been doing this a long time. You guys have been doing a great job of what you do a long time. Sometimes you don't want a new program, a whole new program to represent what you're doing, thinking of the same thing. You're talking people that need help?
May I add something?
Willie?
I'd just like to say a couple of things. Again, the clients that we serve, I can promise you, they're gonna, whether One Heart happens or not, they're gonna find the locations they need to go to, to provide the services for them folks. So they will, they will know the differences as all this grows and comes together. And I'd just like to say with Commissioner Buskrud's comment of, obviously, I've been involved in this since the start of the process. We've known since, and I'm talking the logo process and also when we started this many years ago, working on this. But, but we knew that there was controversial, it was controversial with the One Heart and location and a lot of this. And so as we were putting this together, we truly see this as our services as independent of whatever may happen. Yes, do we believe that that creates a synergy and everything that they want to do helps complete everything that's, that is going on and what we need to do for our community? We do agree with that. But whether or not that happens next to us or out by Kmart or wherever that may be, I just, I truly believe that all the folks that we're gonna be serving, they'll understand who's doing what and where they need to go, and the folks that are bringing them there will, they will, they will know where to go. And what I would promise you is, is, is we'll do everything in our power to, to deal with any confusion or the marketing part of all this. We'll, it'll be very clear with what we're doing here and whatever happens in the future with another entity, I'm sure they will do the same.
Follow-up, sir?
Mr. Hagcock?
So, if you want to be independent, then you can't put a heart on your building. That's my bottom line. Willie, we, we are different. As city, I didn't know what county did back in the day until I came to the county, and that's most people. So, there's a lot of stuff going on in your building that even before you added the other part, people don't know about. So, it, it does make a difference to be independent in a certain sense of what we do compared to what city does. Not maybe for your helping services like you're thinking, but for people trying to find their way and what they need and trying to explain to your public, independent does make a difference because I didn't know the difference and I was a city council person. And I was on Detox Board and other things, but I didn't know everything we had in the county. So it's, it's not your services.
I'll just say, I respectfully disagree with the confusion. I think, I agree there was confusion to start out with when you have Restoration, Transformation, you had the naming the same, the names are different. The logo, I think, really people don't pay much attention to. I was part of the, the group that come up with the logo for Detox to start out with, with the eagles flying over the hills with Doug Austin and so forth. Nobody remembers that. You know, what they stuck with was Detox, not city-county alcohol drug programs, it's Detox. They looked for something simple and that's what they identified the services there with. I, I just, I, I understand where Deb's and some of the commissioners are coming from, but the logo, just the picture itself doesn't identify and confuse people from what, what the name is. And that's what usually happens when you get a call to pick up somebody, they're gonna take them to the care center. That's what's gonna come over the radio with, and that, those are the people that we deal with. We don't, very rarely deal with walk-in clients. You know, the Crisis Care Center, yes. But the majority are brought by the police department, so that's where I, I'm at with this. I, I understand Deb about the confusion with the heart itself and One Heart, I, I get that, but what Pendleton County Sheriff's Department, city-county alcohol and drug programs has been doing for the last 30, 40 years, you know, people know what, what they did. They don't go, we're going to CC, you know, before, so I mean...
Well, Chairman, can I, can I say one thing? If the logo's not important, then let's call it the care campus, restoring mind, body, and spirit. Because if they're not gonna remember the logo, I'm good with not putting it on there. I guess, and that's, I would agree if we took the logo off. Because if they don't remember logos, let's take it off.
I think that the logo itself represents what, what the care says. Maybe that's a personal, my personal feeling after sitting through what they've all went through, all the work that's gone through this, going out to many groups of people and what to come up with, I guess, I've become attached to it.
So have we.
We'll get your shirt.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buskrud.
Seems a little maybe nasty comment, but how much did this cost us?
Well, I don't know the total offhand, but nothing to this point but time, which I get it.
So the people who devised this didn't charge us anything?
That, are you talking?
Well, I don't know, you said somebody's here that...
Midwest Marketing.
Yeah.
We have not received a bill from them at this point.
That's not the, that's not the answer.
Oh, we have? Oh, then I'll let you.
But I, I don't know, I don't have the total.
I suppose we'll see it someday in the bills.
Yes.
Well, I guess we need a motion to either approve the name and the logo as presented or a motion to otherwise.
Be my motion to approve the care campus, restoring mind, body, and spirit without the logo.
I'll second that just to see how we vote.
Okay. Motion's been made by Hagcock and seconded by Buskrud to approve everything but the logo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Roll call, please.
Let's do a roll call.
Buskrud?
No.
Farby?
Yes.
Hagcock?
Aye.
And LaCroix?
No. Two to two. So, with two to two vote, we've learned to get it continued on to the next meeting.
So Chairman, can I say something?
Is it, I mean, we're done discussing. It's, we voted and...
Just a suggestion, just a suggestion, sir. Maybe do the care campus and maybe change the, the logo at the top into something different. Just a suggestion.
So it gets...
Without the heart.
Gets continued on to the next meeting.
Come back to the next meeting if we can bring something else that's acceptable.
Maybe two, maybe two options or something.
Okay, we will go to work on that.
You have other pictures too that you guys had too, so that would might, might be nice to show ahead of time too, of some of those.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have inmate transportation bu, bus bid process. Brian?
Hello, Brian Mueller, Chief Deputy with the Pennington County Sheriff's Office. I've outlined in a letter kind of what, what the process is for the replacement cycle for our prisoner transportation bus and given you the, the facts and the, the history behind that and, and laid out a motion. And at this time, we'd like to move forward with advertising for bids for a new bus, declaring our, our backup, current backup bus we have right now is a surplus property to be sold next spring or early summer when the new bus arrives. And I stand for any questions that you might have.
Now, Brian, I, from what I read, you guys are keeping the newest of the one for a backup?
Correct.
And it has 100,000 miles on it or 200?
The, currently, we have two buses. We have the 2009 that we wanted, that we want to sell, and then the newer bus we purchased in 2014. And I think today it has right around 185,000 miles on it. It's probably gonna be right around 200,000 by the time we do this process. And the way we work that is, we run our primary bus, you know, we, we take two trips a week back and forth across the state, and we run the backup bus, one of those trips per month. And it allows us to do maintenance and clean up and other things with the primary bus that we utilize and extends the life of that bus. And then it keeps the, the backup bus running and reliable enough that if we have a bigger issue with the, with the main bus, it breaks down someplace, that we have a good reliable backup bus, we're able to go and continue with those services.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buskrud?
What do you think a new one's gonna cost?
It's gonna be, I would estimate probably just over 550,000, somewhere between 550 and 570,000.
And what we're doing today is just authorizing you to put out for bids. And we would still, you'd still come back and have us approve that bid, is that...
Correct. And the letter provides the date that we'd bring those back, the bids back to open up in front of the commission and discuss it at this time. And the 2009 bus does have some resale value. I'd tell you, this is probably the first year we've had a bus that's had decent resale value. I don't know what that's gonna be. It's really gonna depend on the market, who's in the market for a used bus. But the, the two previous buses that I've been involved with selling were way at end of the life, had nearly a million miles on them. This one still will have some value to be able to put towards this purchase also at the end of the day.
Nice.
Okay. Mr. Farby?
So, in your letter, you, you say a combination of the jail budget and bus reserve account. The combination is just in case the bid comes in over the 500,000, I gotta set aside?
The, the bid, the last bus we purchased, I think, was just under 550,000. So, this bus, I, I would expect to come in at a little bit over that. So we will need to utilize a little bit of combination of the, the bus reserve, the, the jail budget that we do put some money in, and then the combination of the resale value of the current bus.
So, Mr. Chairman, my question was, the combination is a backup plan? Yes or no?
No. And it also has to do with timing. And it also has to do with timing. We have the, the bus reserve is set up that, in the spring each year, we transfer a hundred thousand dollars that we budget for. This is a planned budget move. We work with the auditor's office, we move that budget from, that money from the budget to the bus reserve. And if we happen to purchase this bus prior to that move, it would make more sense to be able to work directly with the auditor and spend that money in which account it is versus moving it and spending it. That's why we put that language in there. And we do budget a little bit of extra money, did budget a little bit of extra money for this bus replacement. So, this is planned.
So, if I look at the big budget book, there'll be a, how many dollars in there for a backup in case the five hundred thousand isn't, and reserve isn't enough?
We have vehicle replacement budget money in the law enforcement budget, the jail budget.
It'll be co-mingled with that. Thank you.
Correct.
Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Hagcock?
Well, it makes sense. He has vehicle replacement, and then he has reserves. It's basically the same thing. They just put the capital improvement, which is gonna cost him more out of a vehicle in reserve every year because they knew they're gonna have to replace it. So, what he's saying, it's still vehicle. He just has a reserve for vehicle, which happens to be a bus. So, it makes sense.
This is con air. What do you call this? Con bus? Con what?
It's the South Dakota, Pennington County inmate transportation system.
There you go.
You gotta have a cleverer name than that.
That's right. Maybe we could come up with one.
It's the care bus.
We work on a logo for the bus.
It's a care bus with that logo on it.
The heart on it.
Keep that up for the rest of the meeting so the commissioners can-
I think the heart would look good on that bus.
Anyhow, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to advertise and put to bid one new, our demonstration model forty-passenger inmate security transportation vehicle, and further move to declare the 2009 MCI D4 Coach Asset 58849 as surplus property to be advertised and sold to the highest bidder upon receipt of the new transportation bus in the spring of 2019.
Well, moved.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Buskerd. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? George?
Said aye.
Okay, votes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Items from Treasurer, number seventeen. Janet?
Good morning, Janet Saylor, Treasurer. I sent the commissioners a memo, I would like to over-hire by one FTE. I am not requesting any additional funds for this employee. I have a thirteen-year employee who will be retiring in May of next year, and I would like to get somebody on board and get him trained before she leaves.
Since you're not asking for any money, obviously, we'll probably do it. But it's gonna take you nine, ten months to train her?
Absolutely, because we're, we are supposed to be even getting a new program in January. I have a good pool of applicants to choose from this time. So, I would like to get them on board and get them started. There's a lot to learn.
I'll make the motion to allow Treasurer's Office to over, over, what'd you call it?
Over-hire by one FTE.
By one employee through June first of 2019.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, and Janet, I'm assuming this person's gonna be training multiple people, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I gathered, so it's not just one employee. You're gonna utilize her to train newcomers coming on that's gonna-
I have someone that does the training.
Okay.
But they're going to, the new ones that are coming on are going to be trained in specific areas to take the overflow of this employee.
Okay. So, we have a motion to over-hire one FTE from the Treasurer's Office effective immediately through June first of 2019. Motion was made and seconded by Hagcock, by Buskerd. Any further discussion, Mr. Farby?
I guess, if nobody else is gonna ask, I'm gonna have to ask why this employee won't work for nothing. Where's the money coming from?
I will, I have an employee that was making more money, that has left. So, it will come from there. And I'm very careful with my budget. I will not come back to this commission and ask for money. Trust me on that. I've never done that, and I won't start now.
So, we can-
I will do whatever I have to do to make sure this employee is paid.
I am not requesting additional funds to add another employee, okay.
And at the end of May thirty-first next year, that FTE will go away.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Motion on the floors for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Janet. Items from eighteen Emergency Management Service Communications Center.
Good morning, Commissioners Ted Rufflett, Deputy Director of the nine-one-one center. We're here this morning to ask you for, to establish an out-of-class pay rate. There's already several established in the county for when somebody's acting as a supervisor or doing something outside their normal duties. And this is something that the folks that handle payroll for us have asked us to do. We had been paying them a different way when they would do radio tower climbing. And they said, you really need to have an out-of-class pay rate for that. It's not something they do all the time, and they actually don't do it that often. But when they do do it, we need to have this out-of-class pay rate. And so, we had checked with private shops around the state that do this work, and we're trying to set a rate here that doesn't pay them less than what they're currently getting on the method we're doing it. And yet, we also wanna be competitive with the commercial shops that go out and do this work. It's very dangerous work. I included a PowerPoint with you of some pictures. They, these people for some reason enjoy doing this work. I'd rather keep my feet on the ground, but they like getting up on the towers and working. But it requires a lot of training and certification and safety equipment, and it just is something that justifies having a out-of-class pay rate for this. And so, what we're doing is asking for a motion to set that rate at forty-eight dollars per hour when they're doing engaged in tower climbing activity. And I think I'll stop there and see if there's any questions or if you need any more information.
Moved by Hagcock. Seconded by Buskerd.
Chairman.
I was gonna say, Deb, you've climbed some towers.
I was gonna say, you know, next year I could be looking for a part-time job.
I just had to, I had to throw that in there, Ted. She's-
I wouldn't do it for a hundred.
She did some decorations for the Christmas thing on the water tower, so I had to throw that in there.
Claude.
Go ahead, Miss Hagcock.
He reiterated the why. Actually, that water tower is pretty awesome, but you wanna have your arms hurt the next day 'cause it's just one big ladder up to the top, but it was pretty awesome up there. So, tell me how does that, does that affect your bottom line for your budget this year or next year, Ted?
It really doesn't, no. Because the hours are, there's just not enough numbers there to really throw our budget off. And with our budget and the number of employees we have, you know, we have some normal turnover every year. So, this is something we can easily absorb, and it just won't be a problem.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to set the out-of-class pay for ES-CC radio technician at forty-eight dollars per hour while performing tower climbing work. Any further discussion?
Sick looking at the pictures.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Ted. Items from equalization. Some abatements. Shannon?
Good morning, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have three abatement requests before you for two trailer houses. The first one is an abatement for the 2017 taxes. Ellsworth Development Authority acquired a abandoned mobile home and hauled it to the dump. And then, request for an abatement of 2017 and 2016 taxes on a mobile home that was destroyed by fire.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the abatements for Tax ID eight hundred five one six six, Ellsworth Development Authority, and Tax ID eight hundred twenty-six twenty-five for Benny and Frances were present. Oh, am I doing one?
I don't know why you can't have one motion for all, all of them.
I guess the commission, would you like to do both of them or one at a time?
Both is good. They're pretty obvious for a city. That'd be my motion, sir.
Motion made by Hagcock and seconded by Buskerd to approve both, as I stated. Get that, Kara?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Okay. Items from highway. Mark?
Good morning, Mark Schock, Pennington County Highway. I'm here today with an award recommendation for AGG two thousand eighteen dash one, which is an aggregate stockpile project, or the Kerstedt pit. Kerstedt pit is, or what we are proposing here is seventy thousand ton stockpile of surfacing gravel. It's about forty miles north of Wall on the Clayton-Kerstedt property. Our gravel roads are on an eight-year cycle for resurfacing. We put two inches of additional gravel each eight years on the roads. So, the seventy-seven ton stockpile would cover about forty-four miles of roads up in the very far northeast corner of Pennington County. We, we received only one bid on this project, probably more due to timing of the year. The, as we know, we worked for the last two years on the new mining, aggregate mining ordinance in Pennington County. That was approved by the commission in the spring. Due to that timing, and then the requirements for bid, the bidding process, the twenty, that brought us to July twelfth, I should say, 2018, for the bid opening. And this time of year, a lot of contractors have their projects, their summer filled, their construction season filled. So, we had one bidder, and that was Rogers Construction for the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
So, that'd be my motion to approve.
Motion made by Hagcock, seconded by Buskerd to approve, as you stated, the 2018 dash one aggregate stockpile for three eighty-seven five. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Buskerd?
Go ahead.
Seems to me that twenty thousand dollars for mobilization is an awful lot of money.
Mobilizations are a very costly part of the projects, and this particular pit is forty miles north of Wall. It's a pretty remote location up there, so from Rapid City, we're talking ninety miles. I guess, these guys are out of Sturgis, South Dakota, Rogers Construction.
And all it really entails is what, dragging a crusher over there and-
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What they really needed is a crusher and a dump truck and a loader.
They usually have a dozer, a crusher, conveyor belt system, sometime of a loader, and sometimes an excavator.
Okay, so you don't think twenty thousand is out of line?
Not really compared to a lot of other project mobilizations.
All right.
Next, Mr. Farby?
Just to give us a feel, how do we pay Kerstedt so much a ton? Or we, how do we pay him for the gravel?
This was bid by a ton here. It came to, well, in addition to the mobilization, it's five dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. That is a fairly high number for prairie gravel. That's more consistent with gravel that's crushed in the Black Hills area, where blasting's involved. But I think it's probably due, like I said, to the timing of the year was a big factor. Lot of, lot of other construction companies are booked up for the year. They did not bid. And that, again, that's one of the reasons this is, this is a little higher than normal. But that area north of Wall, it's very hard to find gravel, and those are the roads that are due now on our eight-year cycle. We feel, we need some gravel up there. We may pay more now than we would next spring if it were to be delayed, but we'd like to get started on this gravel. We've been short of gravel, partly due to the unexpected two-year moratorium put on permits, and then some issues we've had with crushing up in the, on one of our Black Hills pits has actually set us behind on our eight-year schedule. So, we are anxious to get started, our trucks back on the road before winter comes. We've got a few months, and up in the, up in this area, if we have an open winter, we can continue to gravel through the winter months for the most part. So, we are recommending that we spend a little extra money on this gravel so we can keep our maintenance program up, and we don't fall too far behind.
Thanks, Mark. Mr.?
Let me ask the question a different way than, our total cost is three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, or we pay on, that's a contract, and we pay Kerstedt then for so much a ton? Or is this the total price?
The three hun, this is the total price.
So, Rogers pays Kerstedt then?
There will be royalties to the landowner, Mr. Kerstedt, yes. That is a dollar per ton.
That's above and beyond this, then?
That is not part of this bid here. This is just for the crushing project. An additional, you're correct, an additional one dollar per ton royalties goes to the landowner.
Okay, all right. So, it'd be a scale there, obviously, all the stuff is weighed out?
Yes, there's a belt scale on, when it, after it comes out of the crusher, it goes onto the belt as it goes into a pile, and it's all weighed out.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Motion, we have a motion for approval. And seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mark? I just wanna make a comment, since everybody's here, on that Sheridan Lake Whispering Pines public meeting.
Yes, that next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth?
Yes. And I just wanted to mention that it's July twenty-fifth from six to eight PM at the Whispering Pines Fire Hall on Clarkson Road. And I think we discussed, I would like to be there as commissioner to help support it, but I am gonna be in peer at that time. So, I'd like to formally ask if I can get a commissioner to volunteer to attend. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, from six to eight PM.
Six to eight PM, yes.
Would you?
It's a kickoff for an informational meeting also for the landowners just before right-of-way acquisition process starts.
That's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. And Mark's right, I should read that out. It's for information following the invitation to be mailed out to landowners with whom right-of-way negotiations are needed for the Sheridan Lake Road reconstruction project. That's what it's for, so. We can mark your calendars, and I appreciate you stepping up, Deb. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we don't go into a board of adjustments till ten-thirty. In the past, the commission has decided to go executive session. We have one item that'd take probably a minute. Would you prefer to go to executive session now or then?
Do we need our attorney?
I-
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think it's pretty-
A motion to go in the executive session?
Thank you.
Motion's been made, and seconded to go in the executive session. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're back. There was a motion made by Busch to come out of executive sec, session, seconded by Hagcock.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion to go into board of adjustment.
Oh, we gotta...
Didn't you need that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
Just a second.
Make motion to authorize opting into the, joining the class action lawsuit regarding the underpayment of Pilt monies due to Pennington County for the years 2015 through 2017, and authorize the state's attorney's office to submit the required form.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now I'll make a motion to go into board of adjustment.
Moved by Busch, seconded by La Croix to go into board adjustments. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. The only item on board of adjustment today is a variance request, 1807. This is a request to reduce the minimum side yard setback from eight feet to zero feet on the southern property line in order to replace a deck on this property. The applicant is May Heikonen. This property is located in the valley. Currently, this property is 0.13 acres. It's own suburban residential district, currently has a house on it that was built prior to our zoning ordinance. There was a second floor deck on it. She has since removed that deck and is replacing that deck, which is the purpose of this variance request. The previous deck was deemed legal non-conforming. When she took it down, the deck lost its legal non-conforming status and now cannot meet setback requirements. This deck actually is accessed by a second-story door. So she was simply going to replace the deck, same size as it was before. The steps would no longer come off the front, they would come off the back, and she was proposing to add a roof over the structure. This process was started actually through an ordinance violation. We received a complaint that the deck was being built without a building permit and too close to the property line. As you can see, they had started the deck. We're unaware that they needed a building permit, according to the applicant. So they had started the deck, and there was concern about the roof overhang as it did appear to actually cross the property line. And there was concern from the neighbor regarding what that would do to the drainage and things along those lines with the water coming off of the roof. The applicant has since indicated that she does plan on putting a gutter system on the roof, from my understanding, to help alleviate some of the drainage coming off of the roof. This was routed through the inner department or review process. Both the City of Rapid City Public Works and the City of Rapid City Community Development do not agree with the setback requirement. Public Works said that they recommend against a setback for the roof and support the minimum variance required for access to the door. The Department of Community Development said that they would like to ensure that a minimum separation exists between the residents and the structural development on the adjacent property to meet fire protection requirements between the structures. So as far as the criteria for a variance request, staff has observed through a site visit that the deck does provide ingress and egress from the second level of the existing residence from a door that previously existed on the house. The setback variance does not grant use, which is otherwise excluded, from suburban residential district zoning. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require them to meet or exceed the eight-foot setback requirement from that property line. The applicant has indicated on the submitted application that the hardship is that there is a second-story door, and they need this deck to access that door. The hardship appears to be, to be the existence of an ingress and egress door on the second floor and limited buildable space in the side yard. And granting this setback variance would allow for a reduced setback, which is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. And staff has, at the time of this, that this report was written, staff has received two, actually affidavits of complaint. That should be included in your packet as well. So due to the existing ingress and egress door on the second floor of the house and the limited buildable space in the side yard, it does appear that there may be a condition that may warrant approval of this variance. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1807, staff recommends three conditions be included.
And those three conditions, one of them would be that the gutter wouldn't be over the property line itself?
Correct. That, the, the first condition is that the variance only applies for the proposed covered deck and gutter system. And the second condition actually requires them to provide a survey once it's complete, verifying that no portion of the gutter system, the roof, or the deck actually encroaches over the property line.
Okay. Casey is the applicant here?
There she is.
How do you pronounce your name? Mia?
May.
May? Okay. Is there a door underneath that deck?
No, there's not. It's the, that's my only exit from my second story. The house was designed kind of sideways. My front entrance is on the other side, and it's on, it's a split foyer house. And I'm, one of the main complaints when my, my neighbors posted was that my dogs would jump the fence if the stairs go along the fence. Well, if you look at the previous photo of the original deck, it went along the fence as well. So I've lived in that house for fifteen years, and there has always been a stairway along the fence. I, my goal is to redirect my stairs to the back of my yard so my dogs aren't out in my front yard barking at everybody that walks by. I was doing it to be a friendly neighbor, I guess, because who wants to be barked at by dogs every single time you walk by? And I included the original survey of my property, and none of this stuff is going to go beyond my fence line, with the exception of maybe the gutter. And I still have a few inches on the other side of my fence. So the only thing objection I have is I honestly can't afford to pay for a survey. I'm a single mom. I have five kids. A survey is between fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. I don't have that kind of money. I've already invested, between all the fee, the variance fee and the building permits and the cost of the deck itself, I'm already at three thousand dollars. This deck was a safety hazard to my children. It was missing an entire side because of wood was rotten away. I haven't replaced it, and I've lived, like I said, I've lived in that house fifteen years, and this is the first time I've been able to replace it, and I didn't realize all the steps that were involved. My house was built in eighty-seven, and I'm fairly certain that those rules of having the variance setbacks weren't, or the setbacks weren't in place at that time, so...
Well, thanks for giving this thing, but I'm going to give you, mention something to you. We're short one commissioner today, and it's active for that district. And for a variance approval, you need four. And I know you haven't been sitting in the audience throughout the whole meeting to be able to feel where the commission is or how they're voting or anything like that, but I want to give you the opportunity. Do you want to continue this till the next commission meeting? Till your committee, your district person is here, to be able to talk with him a little bit more? Or do you want to take your chance? You gotta have four unanimous vote.
I understand.
I wa, I just want to give you that option.
I'd rather get it done with, honestly, because it's been sitting like this for months. And at this point, it's a fire hazard. What if there's a fire? My children would be able to get out of my second story. I mean, there's no stairs on it at all. It literally looks just like that right now. So the longer I wait, you know, hopefully, there's never a fire, but I don't want to take that chance.
I just wanted to give you that option. Second question, sorry, commissioners, is you stated about the survey that'd be part of the requirements. You're saying you don't want that, that re-surveyed done? That would be part of the requirements that's suggested by staff that happens?
Yeah, I understand. I was requesting that you guys waive that requirement. I included my original survey, which does show my property line and the fence. The new deck is exactly the same dimensions as the original deck. Nothing's changed on it, with the exception of the roof and the stairs. I mean, it's still within the fence line, which the other, the other deck was. And I had, my property extends eight foot, three inches past from the foundation of my house. And the deck right now, even with the gutter, will only, won't, I don't think it'll pass eight foot. I think the deck's sitting at seven, six. It's on the paperwork.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions?
Chairman, I do.
Ms. Hagcock?
I, I think this is a hardship, because you do need that second floor to get it, you know, that built for your second floor access. The only thing is, is if you look in the pictures, your slanted roof drains right over to the other side of the property.
Yep. The guy that was working on that for me, he just, he's, does it complicated, I guess. He is going to cut all of them to square with the, with the actual deck, and he's going to put the gutter back onto it. It's not going to overhang like that. It's going to be, the gutter is going to be on the other side, on the outside of the deck. But other than that, that's, those railings are going to be cut back to size.
Okay. The main thing is, is if, if she does that, I don't think the survey needs to be done either. I think if he does it right, and this is one of those variances that are a hardship, I believe, because, again, there's no second floor. And what is she going to do if, if she doesn't have access to the second floor? So I would hope we would approve it.
Mr. Busch, is yet?
Yeah, I have no problem with, with the deck. I have a real problem with the, putting a roof on it. There wasn't a roof on it before. You know, that's, I suppose that's nice to have, but...
The reason, can I say something? The reason why I put the roof on is because I have an autoimmune disorder. I can't be out in the sun. It just, so the peak heat of the day, I can go in the early morning, early evening. So if I want to grill something during the middle of the day, it's, it makes me sick. Honestly, it does. It's, the sun triggers my autoimmune disorder, and then I'm sick, and then I miss work. So the reason for the roof was so I could go out and enjoy my deck. Honestly, that's why I opted for a roof.
Chairman?
Hold on. Pardon?
No, I, 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 that, I guess that's understandable. You know, you put gutter on it and it stays on your property. I guess that satisfies me.
Ms. Hagcock?
We have a porch that's covered like that, too, and none of the water goes down onto, like, the front of us. Ours kind of comes out from the front of our house, and then we, we have the gutter, and it drains actually to the side. So if she puts a gutter on there, she won't have any problem draining right onto the other people's property. We never get on, any on the front of our house where, that's where we walk through, so I do know.
Okay. Any further comment from the commission? Mr. Farabee?
Couple of issues. Number one, why are we requiring a permit or a variance or anything to replace what was there years ago? That's the number one issue. You know, the covering, just forget the covering for now. Just replacing the structure that was there that's old and rotten. Are, are, are we setting ourselves in a course to, to require this anytime somebody replaces a step or, or a, or a deck? It's the same dimensions, exact same dimensions, right?
Yeah, everything's the same.
See, I've, I've got a problem with that. Because, like Cassie said, it's replacing the deck, replacing that structure. Now it's no longer legal, non-conforming. I've got a real problem with that. Real problem with that going forward. So she shouldn't even be having, shouldn't require a variance. Now, that's one issue to me. No variance required. However much she spent for it, it shouldn't be required. She's merely replacing. Stuff does get old and aged and weathered. Obviously, it was a safety concern. And obviously, that's the way it was built long before our time. I have a problem with the covering. I, I really do. A covered deck and, and I think, did I hear you say you're barbecuing out on the deck?
Oh, I have a grill, yeah, and that's where my grill goes, because when you walk into my second story, that's my kitchen right there.
I don't know what the fire guy would say about grilling on a wooden deck, but I, I would certainly not advocate that. That is a safety hazard. You shouldn't be out there grilling on a deck, on a wooden deck.
I'll have to tell my wife.
Yeah.
That's what you build a deck for.
Obviously, I, I can't see us requiring a variance. Except, now, if you want the variance for that roof, that's a different matter. Not sure I'd vote on that, but, but replacing the, replacing the structure that was there, I have a real problem with that. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Mr. Busch?
Just as a friendly reminder, if it was me, I would continue this for two weeks.
I would, too.
So should I continue it then?
Actually, three weeks. Well, I'm not going to give you advice, but as the chairman said, you need four votes, and, and you've heard one of the commissioners not all that crazy about voting in favor of it, so you're not going to get four votes. So next time, you know, I'd call Mr. DeSanto up. You may be in his area, convince him otherwise. But that's up to you. I'm not telling you what to do.
So if I don't get votes, do I just not going to have a second-story deck? How am I supposed to get out of my...
Probably have to come back with changes, like some of them said, with no roof or something like, would, you'd have to change the, the application, wouldn't you, Cassie? And come back again.
Okay, well, I guess I'll get a continuance.
You're requesting to the next county commission meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. Now, was it, was there somebody here that wanted to speak in behalf of this, too? Did you want to wait to that point in time? Okay. I seen you stand. I'll let him. Please identify yourself for the...
I'm Richard Schiels. I'm the owner of the house, this house. I have no issue with May building an uncovered deck there. It's just replacing the current one. I do have an issue with the roof, due to the fact that it will require me to do grading work to my home and potentially cause, have me carry flood insurance and cause tens of thousands of damage if that gutter ever fails. I do have a chimney that goes through my foundation there that I've had flood issues with in the past when we've had heavy rains. And with that much water coming, since she's doubling basically the size of that roof, where it's going to be funneling to that gutter, it's going to cause issues for me.
So you're the property owner right next door?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, Fitzgillman. Looks like you've got a shed in the back?
Yes.
Did you get a variance?
That was there when I purchased the home.
That's pretty close to the fence, too.
Yes.
Chairman?
Okay. Did you have anything else you'd like to share? Because she's requesting a continuance.
Just something for the gentleman. So, sir, if, if she does the drainage right, it shouldn't flood you out?
I have an issue with the draining towards my property at all. Even in the case, even if you build it correctly, over time, it could damage it and do that way. If she was to change the peak to where it drained to the front and to the back of that side yard, I'd have no issue.
Right. But once it drains and you put the gutter on, depending where that gutter goes, just because...
I understand that.
I have that on all my buildings.
Fails, it's going to come right towards my foundation, and that's where my issue is.
Right, but...
And like she said, she does grill, and with that roof being so low, it does cause a hazard. I spent five years in the military as a fire inspector.
Yes. Ours is about eight feet high, and we have a gutter, and I haven't seen it.
That's great, ma'am. I'm not comfortable with having it that close to my home.
Okay. Okay. Let's, uh...
Make a motion to continue this till the next meeting.
Been moved, now seconded, to continue this to the next county commission meeting. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Make a motion to come out of the board of adjustment.
Been moved to come out of adjustments, seconded by La Croix. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to gazette. Gazette?
I'm not quite sure what that word is. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, Major Planned Unit Development Amendment Review 1701 for Karen Moore, and continuation is recommended to the August 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item C, Major Planned Unit Development Amendment 1703 for Chris Hamm, KTM Design Solutions, and approval is recommended. And item D, Layout Plot 1818 for Dan Wharton, and approval is recommended.
Make a motion to approve the...
Make a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda.
And now second, any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries with Faraby, La Croix, and Buskard. Now we end the consent agenda. Item E.
Item E is a layout plat eighteen seventeen. This is a request to create lots three A and three B of Snyder subdivision. The applicant is Jeffrey Reed. Um, as this property exists today, it is currently zoned limited agriculture district. It's ten point zero one acres. Access to this property is off of Triple S Drive, um, and the lot currently contains a machine shop. What they are proposing to do is subdivide this property down the middle. Lot three A would be approximately four point seven four two acres. Lot three B would be approximately four point seven two eight acres. There is also a previously platted drain field easement that would straddle the proposed lot lines that they are, um, going to be leaving on the plat. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Um, nothing of significant concern came back other than needing a few corrections on the plat. However, the Department of Equalization did comment that there are restrictions and covenants filed for the property which restrict subdividing smaller than ten acres. Um, the reason I do point that out is 'cause I do wanna remind that Pennington County does not enforce covenants and restrictions outside of section three nineteen, which is the Vacation Home Rental Ordinance. Um, so any violation of the covenants and restrictions would be a civil matter between the homeowners association and the property owner. Um, I did actually have a conversation with the, I believe it was the daughter of the applicant. Um, she actually stated that she came down here and was not able to find the actual recorded covenants. Um, so that's part of the reason why we don't get involved is because it becomes kind of a, a sticky situation. So, um, Planning Commission did recommend approval of layout plat eighteen seventeen with eleven conditions.
Is the applicant here?
I don't think so.
Is that the building that's in between both?
What's that?
If, if this is approved, the, the shop building that he has is bordering both sides?
No, the shop building will be completely on lot three A. That box that you see in the center there is the drain field easement.
Okay.
Yep, the shop sits wholly on lot three A, and appears that it'll meet setback requirements.
Okay.
Okay, did you find anywhere, she said she couldn't find the, the covenants. Did you find them?
Um, I didn't look. Um, I didn't have time to go research them over at the Register of Deeds. She said that she came down and, um, tried to research them and she was not able to find them.
Who said there were then?
Um, the Department of Equalization stated that they were filed.
You know, I, I think I was probably one that was in on the decision that we cannot enforce covenants, and, and I, I still agree with that. On the other hand, I, I'm not sure we, we should be doing things that, that cause a lawsuit, civil lawsuit either, you know? I don't know.
I don't know. I, I tend to agree with you, Ron. When I was reading through this, I mean, it's obviously set in front of us that there is covenants and, and before, we don't, most of the time, landowners don't know or even know where they are, but at this point, we kinda do know, and I think they know. So we're kinda setting ourselves up to, you know, tha- that's why I asked if the applicant was here. I'd be interested to know if he'd talk to the other surrounding landowners to see if they were okay with it.
State's Attorney's Office have anything to say about this quandary, or, it's not a quandary legally, I don't think.
Uh, Pennington County is not bound by civil covenants of other parties. So, your action is independent of that and you have the authority to take that action, but I totally understand your concern. Uh, we would never wanna get in the business of, uh, enforcing private, in fact, I don't even know that we'd have standing to do that. We're not even a party to those covenants. But I, I wish I could help you with a great answer. Action you take, I suppose, could, um, wo- would allow somebody to do something where others could say, well, that violates our covenant, and that'd be a civil matter between them and that other party. But you're not bound by the covenant, so on the other hand, you can act, uh, freely as well, so... I don't have anything better than that, Commissioner Buskard. I wish I did.
Mr. Faraby.
The larger issue is that this is a subdivision that we, we, the county, we, the government, approved, and it's, it's all ten acre lots plus. And I'm guessing it's Snyder subdivision is all those horse names out there. They're all ten acres. So if, that's the way we, the government laid it out, that subdivision, s- so now we're going back on our word. To me, that's a lot larger than HOA. So it's, either we have a subdivision with ten acres and more, or we don't. And unless something come forward and say, yeah, there are smaller lots in that subdivision than ten acres, obviously, I gotta vote against s- subdividing. Where does the subdividing end? Let me mi- remind you folks that, that area out there is, it's obviously got water problems. You know, just south of there, we denied the guy that rezoned here, what, about a year ago. He bought, forget how many acres it was, and he wanted to, to pay for it. He wanted to divide it up, and we said no. In large part, here again, that was, I don't know whether it was L E R or limited ag, but we said no. He bought it to the subdivide to make money that way, and, and we said no, because that's the way it was laid out, plus there were water and sewer problems. So how much do we wanna overload that area if we start? My issue is if, if there's all ten acre lots or larger in that subdivision, then, then we're going back on our word, number one, and we're creating a problem, resource problem, water and sewer problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I would probably suggest that maybe we continue this, and I would personally like to have the applicant here to ask some questions. Um, I don't know what the Commissioners would like to do, but...
I'll move to continue.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to continue to the next County Commission meeting.
And, and, and I'd like the, the staff to research and, and that, when that subdivision was laid out, and if there were provisions in that subdivision specifying ten plus acres, or, or whatever conditions were laid on, I, I know, t- to me, that was the way it was laid out.
So motion on the floor is to continue to the next County Commission meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item F should look somewhat familiar to you. Item F is a layout plat eighteen nineteen. This is a request to reconfigure lot lines to create Glendale tract and Hermosa tract. Um, the applicant is T D G Real Estate or Mike Gennaro. This actually was in front of you before, uh, about a month ago, I think. Um, originally, he had proposed to subdivide these two mining claims into four lots. Um, the Commission at that time had concern with increasing density by that much, so this is actually his second attempt at just reconfiguring lot lines to create two lots out of this. It would be one lot to the north of the road and one lot to the south of the road. Um, he will still have to, um, rezon these properties, but they will be able to meet the minimum acreage requirement to be lo- rezoned to low-density residential instead of suburban residential, which there is, all that yellow in that area, um, is low-density residential. So it appears to fit a little bit better. Um, so that is his request. Lot, or Glendale tract would be five point one two acres, um, and Hermosa tract would be four point zero eight acres. Um, it was routed through the interdepartmental review process, and nothing of significant concern came back other than just a few corrections that need to be done to the plat. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval of layout plat eighteen nineteen with eleven conditions.
That'd be my motion.
Thank you.
Moved and by Haggar, seconded by Buskard for approval and discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item G.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Um, item G is a request for hearing of corrective action and or abatement for a nuisance serving this, a subject property on Good Art Road pursuant to S D C L thirty four sixteen nineteen and S D C L thirty four sixteen twenty one. Um, our ordinance enforcement, um, received a complaint regarding this property. Um, I don't know the exact date. Um, I don't have the exact timeline in front of me. We'll present that at the hearing. Um, but under that statute, under the thirty four sixteen nineteen, um, we notify the property owners of a nuisance, which would be a surfacing on Sideways Water Treatment System. At that time, um, they are allowed, under that statute, to request a hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners, and that's what these applicants have requested. Um, and because we, um, did not have enough time to get together information for that hearing, and because one of the staff members won't be able to be present at the next County Commission meeting, um, we are asking that the parties stipulate, um, that the hearing be held in front of the Board of Commissioners on August twenty first, two thousand eighteen, and I believe that the council, um, is present in the audience for the parties.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. Commissioners Nathan Shequen, counsel for, uh, the, uh, Tyler's, who are requesting a hearing on this matter. Um, as Ms. Molitor represented, um, there are a litany of issues, uh, in play here. Um, and, um, my clients, um, has, have not been able to, um, get everything together and allow, um, some of the Commissioners to visit the property, which I understand was requested. Th- there's a, a neighboring property that's also at play, and my, my clients are hoping to resolve the issues with the neighbor amicably. Um, this, this violation is actually occurring, uh, on the neighbor's property, um, on an easement that my clients own, and that easement has been fenced off. So my, my clients don't have access to, um, a portion of the property that they've been noticed is in violation. Uh, so we're trying to work through that, um, and have asked for a continuance, um, for the hearing, um, to resolve that and also to allow some of the Commissioners to visit the property.
That'd be my motion then, if you want a continuance, sir. August twenty first, eighteen?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to continue to August twenty first, twenty eighteen. Jack, you're done, right?
I was asked to also provide some dates, uh, the Commissioners could possibly inspect. I do have those.
I, oh, I tell you what, what you should do is give those to Holly, and, and she could try to route them to see if, good luck if you can get all the Commissioners to come in.
A- any of the Commissioners are welcome to.
Okay.
Contact me, and, and we can work that out too. So I will do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would give those to Holly and...
I think George is the septic tank, uh, expert here.
I think this may be George's district too, so...
Okay, so yeah, get them to her and, well, she can get them out.
Little guy in here that is.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to continue to August twenty first, and at the applicant's request, he'd like to have some Commissioners visit the property, and he'll get that, just to confirm that. All in favor of the continuish motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next we come up to, from, items from Chair Commissioners, um... Is the resolution on the equalization? If you guys recall, I'd went to and visited some people in, in Sioux Falls and some other communities and talked about some of this, uh, bringing up this, this resolution for redrafting the equalization board, and, uh, what brought some of these thoughts forward to doing this is fairness to the, the community, equalization. That's what it's all about, is being fair to all property owners, and, you know, I'd... Several years ago, I'd started out on the Board of Equalization through the city, and when you don't have as much experience as other people, it was very enlightening to have somebody on the board that has, uh, assessment ability and, and know that, and it helps get you through the process, and that's what kinda fueled this, is I thought, for, for the Board of Equalization, it would be, it would be very helpful if, if, uh, we formed a board, or was able to form a board, with some people that had the experience of assessments and property values and that other type of stuff, and other communities do do this. And so it came up all of a sudden. We, I didn't get a chance to have a lot of people talk about it, but the Black Hills Area, uh, Association of Commissions is next Monday in Hot Springs, and I would like to present it at that time. Um, I guess I'm open to thoughts from the Commission, Commissioners on this. Ms. Haggar.
Um, I think there should be some, um, people on the board from the, um, community, but I also think, um, if we could all get school board, County Commission, and city all on the same board, I think it'd be helpful, instead of having, do they legally, maybe Buskard or Holly know, do they legally have to have, or, I'm sorry, Shannon, duh. Um, Shannon, do we legally have to have a city board and a county board? I mean, do we both have to have those hearings?
Yes, but there is provision in statute that will allow for a consolidated board. So the city and county could consolidate, and then there will be one Board of Equalization. And then that's made up of County Commissioners and City Council, and I think the school board member.
Well, and it makes more sense, because when you're in the city, um, you just, people would just say, well, you guys can improve mine, but the county's gonna overturn it anyway. But I'd rather, um, that, that in-between be done all on the same board. It saves the, the people that have to come up for equalization hearings time. It saves us time. And it also, we can vent the process through each side and actually learn from each other, um, you know, different things from city, county, and, and, um, um, school board. I think it also shows, um, that if we have those three plus a couple, um, people from community, it's, it just shows a little bit more of that, we're all in the understanding of what's happening, instead of one saying one thing and one, one saying another.
I think we're kinda jumping ahead.
I, I would suggest that, uh, Lloyd's idea here is separate from that because he's talking about appointing a board, uh, to act as Board of Equalization for the county. If that happens, you can still consolidate with the city. That, so this wouldn't prevent that. The county board, uh, whether it's made up of, uh, an appointed board, as Lloyd is suggesting, or not, will always have the option of consolidating with the local board.
Okay, I guess that's what I was asked. Basically, that's my bottom line, is that if you wanna change it, that would be something, um, I would like to see if I could then, is a good way to put it.
The option of consolidating with the local boards is available all the time. This won't change it. Uh, any of the local boards could consolidate if both the, the city and the county agree on it.
And you have to by law change who's on the board? Is that what we're trying to do?
But, what Lloyd's idea is, is to appoint, uh, somebody to act as a Board of Equalization, uh, along with the Commissioners or instead of the Commissioners, however they get appointed. But that's, it's still the County Board of Equalization.
Yeah.
So can't we do that anyway then?
The law currently states that, uh, the County Commissioners, uh, act as a Board of Equalization.
Okay.
It, it's very specific that you are the Board of Equalization.
Okay.
Exactly, and that, and that's why I should have Shannon explain this from the beginning. Because this doesn't work for everybody either, if I'm, am I correct? I mean, some smaller counties are gonna wanna keep it, but it gives you that option.
Yeah, Lloyd's suggestion is, is to make it an option. Uh, I, I would think that it wouldn't be very popular, and maybe not a good idea, if it were mandatory that the Commissioners appoint a Board of Equalization. I, I think it'd be optional that the Commission decides whether they want to appoint, uh, a Board of Equalization and how many people to appoint for that. Uh, let the county decide, no, we're not going to, we're gonna do it ourselves, or you... Or, "Yes, we are. We're going to appoint five brand-new people." Or, "Three and two of us," or whatever. I think it's always...
The optional word is the key.
I think it's good to leave the option in the law.
Options is the key.
And in this letter of support, it's at least one county Commissioner has to be on, is what we're asking. But it could be two, three, four.
Yeah.
The whole idea is to be able to vent the community, to see who would like to serve on it, and get some people that have some experience.
I think we should at least put it out there. And then if it fails, or it's not an option, then we're still, we can go back to where we were.
But this is just a resolution of support of the Commission supports me taking it to Black Hills Local Area County Commissioners. Jay?
I was just going to add, coincidentally, there's precedent for doing this with Board of Adjustment. In our state code, the county commission can act as the Board of Adjustment. The Planning Commission can act as the Board of Adjustment. Or the county commission can appoint a whole separate board to act as the Board of Adjustment. So this, what you're talking about today, is already available as with regard to Board of Adjustment, so there's precedent for doing this. This isn't something wholly new that would come as a shock. You know, that already happens with Board of Adjustment. The county commission has just decided in statute to be the Board of Adjustment. So this is something that's already happening in a different area of the code. Just wanted you to know that. It's not out of line or odd.
Thanks, Jerry, Shannon. Does the Commission support the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Hagcock. I'll second.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Busscreed.
I have a problem the way it's written. You know, part of the problem is that the Commission makes these decisions, and we're not always the greatest judge of it. But to drag people off the street, they're not going to know anything about it, except let's reduce the taxes and the assessment. I have a real problem with that. Now, if you want to put in there, to put someone on, an appraiser, whatever, that knows something about the appraisal system, yeah, I might, I'd probably be in favor of that. But to drag some Joe off the street, that's not going to work, I'm afraid. Shannon's going to spend days, weeks explaining the system to them, and they're still not going to get it. I'm sorry, that's the way I feel.
I'd like to address that. I would be happy with something that was very detailed, that required certain level of experience and knowledge. I just don't think that that's practical for the legislature to come up with. Maybe a term in there, "Real Estate Professional," or something like that. I talked to somebody in another state who was familiar with this process in their state, and there was actually some education required for the people that are going to be on the Board of Equalization. I think that'd be wonderful. I'm all in favor of that. I just wonder if that would actually happen in our legislature, if the legislature would go that far.
I'll respond to that. You know, part of it does say we're going to be requesting bankers, realtors, agriculture representatives. But just from our point of view, we do have an interviewing process for the Planning Commission that could be in turn used for this, where you're, you know, you get three people to enter, take separate interviews for this board, to see if they're required, you know, have some of the stuff that we're looking for. Because we do want a wide variety, but we want some people who can give some good, honest input to not only be equal to the community and the taxpayers, but also to hold Shannon's department accountable. You know, I think it's fair to have some people go back and forth.
I think the assumption is, is that the board will appoint somebody that's qualified.
Yeah, and that assumption is not always correct. It's a dangerous assumption. There's politics involved in these things.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's my problem. And when it says the county Commissioners may also appoint members, you know, I'd rather see it designated more than that. And the problem I understand is that we don't have enough time to really work this thing out.
My perspective on this is that if the board is appointed, it's going to be four or five, whatever. New people that aren't in this room here right now. I just don't think it's going to be any worse than what we got right now. The county Commissioners win an election, and then our Board of Equalization. There's no requirement for experience or knowledge in that. We're hoping that the five Commissioners get together and appoint somebody, spend the time with the interviews or however it's done, and appoint somebody that does have some knowledge and experience.
Obviously, you're not bucking for a raise by saying, "No matter who you appoint, it can't get any worse than what we got now." Nice, Shannon.
He slid that in there.
That's what he said.
I know, he slid it in.
He always feels some love for people.
Okay, folks. Jay?
Well, I was just going to say, if the point is to try to get it to your association for approval, and really ultimately to get it to peer, so that it can be discussed, at least vetted with those options in mind, then, like Holly and I were just talking, add something like a qualified member, or put something down in there, an asterisk, saying we really suggest that these are people that are trained, or something associated with that subject matter. It's just a matter of trying to get it to peer, or get it to your conference, what next week.
Yeah, and this isn't the point of actually writing the proposed legislation.
Well, the bottom line is let them have the discussion and see where it goes. If they shut it down before it even gets there, because it's not a good idea, and they've already vetted it, then it's going to be shut down, but at least let them have the discussion.
I see. Oh, well, that's better than, "Let's pass it before we read it, and see what it says after we've passed it," which has happened before, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, we need more time. They... I might have to disagree with the rest of the equalization, that whether those of us that sit up here are worse, or not as good, or whatever, all of us have skin in the game. Appointed folks don't have skin in the game. To me, that makes a big difference when you're up here voting, on whether somebody's property tax should be, or assessment should be higher or lower, or whatever. All five Commissioners have skin in the game.
Mr. Chairman, we have that because of elections, but we also have it. We know what the budget is going to be next year, and what we're going to need. And I don't say that we value property based on how many taxes we need, but that has to come into consideration somewhere, too.
Well, my example that I use, when I've talked to people on this, is I've seen in one instance where, you know, as Commissioners, we negotiate. We have somebody that comes in every year asking for a reduction. In fact, we had one person who did it for five years, and then at one point, we had to say, "Whoa, your neighbors are paying..." That's what it's all about, equalization. But some people will protest every year just because they know they're going to get it, but is that equal to everybody else? Is it? It's not. That's, and as elected officials, we have a hard time saying no when people contest something. We really do, because it's political. Whereas a wide variety of people, you could get some good feedback on what, you know, if someone has a legitimate, a good legitimate concern on why their taxes or their property isn't worth what it is. We've got some knowledgeable people up here that build or support it so much as the Equalization Department, are not supported one way or the other. That's one of the examples that I use, because I know when the first times I've been up here, I've seen that come forward, where it was five years, and then we finally said, "Hey, that's enough."
So, Chairman?
I think George was, one more time, and then...
We probably blew a little bit out of order, but there's two potential county commission candidates, maybe they ought to weigh in.
Well, let's finish our...
They're not elected yet.
So, it's funny, because now we're saying, first we had committees, and they should be the public, and now we're saying on Board of Equalization, it should be us on some people. So it's kind of funny how we say that, you know, we shouldn't be on these committees, the, and making ordinances. It should be sort of, because we're affecting people on ordinances. So the bottom line is, is hopefully, when you're picking committees, or you're picking these people, that we get professionals. And this is just a discussion item. I mean, I don't know if it'll go through on Black Hills Council Local Governments. It's just for discussion. If it gets shut down, that we support it, or we're thinking about it, then I think Lloyd knows the answer to even move it forward to the next step. And Shannon, hopefully, too, when Black Hills Council Local Government says, "I don't think so." So we do it all the time. And we are in the bottom line. When we pick these people, we have to understand that we are also picking people that if they're just going to approve everything, that, you know, that would not be conducive. But you also hopefully have, like I said, three other members, and then two from the... If I had my way, to have three from those entities and two from the public, that way everybody's got stake in the game. I think it's a good discussion item to move forward.
I don't like putting people on the spot, is Mr. Farabee, but if there's anybody in the public, the audience, that'd like to speak, this is the time. Seeing none, motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So it fails. Next, we have committee reports.
Go first. Went to Fire Service Board last week, and they're very, very, very thankful. 510 volunteers and their representatives. They had a chiefs' meeting, and they just want to thank this board for moving forward on helping them with their budget, and they are moving forward with looking at opt-outs and other options. So that's not off the table. And I thought it was a really good discussion, but bottom line is, they were very thankful from this board of showing their importance and what they do for our community. Number two is the Ag Committee banquet on the 24th next week at 6:00. They have a pig roast at Dan Warren's Ranch. Guys, it's, they have games. You can bring your kids or your wife, and it's a pretty awesome, basically barbecue. So if the Commission would like to go, you are invited. And that was through the Chamber of Commerce. And I did go to that meeting, and they are looking for new chamber members and applications. And I can't remember what the deadline, if it's over by now, but they are changing up on their board as well. So, of course, there's always a discussion from the, what am I trying to say? Think of the name. Military. And a lot of people getting deployed and stuff, so prayers and blessings to all of our military people that are getting deployed and have fought for our country. So a lot of updates on those, and we appreciate everything they do. But school board had same discussions on what's moving forward with them for their budget and some other discussion. So, long story short, the Chamber's doing a good job. They're recruiting members, and they're representing our community well. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. I think you might want to check that schedule for that pig roast. I think those might be the same day as the...
Sheridan Lake Road.
Sheridan Lake Road. Yeah, I think so.
The 24th.
Oh, Tuesday?
The 24th, I thought, at 6:00. Do you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would be Tuesday, the 24th?
Yes, at 6:00. At 6:00.
I just wanted to double.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I've got a few things. Next Tuesday, well, next Monday, we have Black Hills Area County Commissioners meeting in Hot Springs. And then following that, I'll be going to Pine Ridge. We'll be doing, we're going to, I'm a part of the South Dakota Advisory Committee on Civil Rights, to the Commission of Civil Rights. And we're holding briefies on, briefings on subtle effects of racism in South Dakota. So we'll be holding a briefing in Pine Ridge at the Justice Center, at the Ogala Tribal Courthouse on Tuesday, the 24th. And that will start at 9:00 and run until 3:00. And what's really good is our state's attorney, Mark Bargold, will be there speaking on behalf of some of what the justices are doing, and then we'll be taking public comment from 3:00 to 5:00. And then we'll hit the road, and we'll be in Pier at the Casey Tibbs Rodeo Center and taking, and having the same briefings, and taking comment in Fork Pier, also for the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. So I just wanted to get those out there. That's the next Tuesday and Wednesday that we're doing those, and it'll be some good information. The only other thing I'll pass on is I've gotten notice from the Black Hills National Forest. The other day, Forestry Advisory Board had been named as an alternate to the Black Hills National Forest Board. So from my understanding is you work as an alternate for two years, and then two, I can't remember the person's name, but his term's up in two years, and then you move up to being the board members, from my understanding from the letter that I got. So those are the two things that I have got going on as far as being able to report to the Commission. Nobody else has anything? We'll move on to...
I forgot one thing.
Ms. Hagcock.
Guys, you might want to, the STIP Committee for Department of Transportation, the meeting is July 12th, 7:00.
We already had it.
Passed?
Yeah.
Okay, so my point is, look, I know we're past it, but look and see if you're on the radar for that, because there's intersection of South Dakota Highway 44, Omaha Street, East Boulevard, and some other areas, Box Elder, in 2018, that we might be interested in knowing about and updating people in Pennington County. So, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. I'd look for a motion to approve the vouchers of $3,381248.
For approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One no from Mr. Farabee. Motion passes. Items from the public, looks like we have one person who would like to speak. So at this time, the members of the public to... Items from the public, is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and the issues affecting the county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this time on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed.
Did somebody want to speak?
He's not here. He left.
He left?
My apologies.
It was about the fireworks. And the one-mile limit, yeah, in Box Elder.
I was going to say, we're down to two people.
Box Elder, Rapid Valley.
All right. We did executive session, so I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.